And calling, meaning to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ken Johnson from the Road Haven Boys Ranch will say the invocation for us this afternoon.
May we pray. Lord, we thank you for this time that we can come together and to corporately do good things, Lord, for our county school system. I pray, Lord, that you will bless this board, Lord, that you will give them clarity of mind. I pray that you will bring to recall, Lord, what they need from their vast experience. Pray that everything will be done respectfully and honorably. We pray, Lord, that every decision that's made here today will bring honor and glory to you as well. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much. And would everyone please silence their cell phones?
Let me miss Crawford.
No. Okay, I've received no cards for public comment, so we are moving on to the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to remove anything for further consideration? Mr. Roach?
Yes, ma'am. C-12.
C-12? Anyone else in the audience? Board members? Jane?
No.
Nikki?
Nope.
David?
No, ma'am.
Terry?
No, ma'am.
I have nothing either. I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda minus item C-12.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to accept the consent agenda minus item C-12.
I'll second.
Motion is second on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Carrie's five zero. Mr. Roach, would you like to please come up and address us about item, well, C-12? Is there anyone from Putnam, Muncher?
Lisa's back there.
Hi, Lisa. You'll probably come up also during the discussion.
Um, it was an oversight on my part. Ms. Freeman asked us to put this on the consent agenda. In the cover letter, when they requested us to extend the charter for a 15-year period, I have no issue with that. What I do have an issue with is the request for the three additional classrooms. I know that Ms. Freeman and Ms. Parsons have talked to the superintendent about some portable space. I asked Ms. Whitehurst and Mr. Tucker to be here today to, if you have any questions about actual classroom available space that they have on campus. Right now, there isn't any. Mr. Getchel and I have, along with Mr. Chastain, have gone over and kind of surveyed where we could put a portable. It is possible. It'd have to be a non-combustible. One request was that we put one outside of Building Three, which would be in the grass area in between the building and the parking lot. I know years ago, they paved the parking lot and got rid of all those portables and build those two wings to do away with the portables. If we have to put a portable up, I would rather it be placed in an area where we can't see it from the road. And in between the two wings would, and Mr. Getchel can address that better than I, it would have to be a non-combustible. It would, depending upon the setbacks, but we do have the ability, you know, if we have to, to put one portable on the campus.
What exactly, what's the approximate cost of doing that? Is that some weird?
I'm assuming that they are absorbing all those costs.
But I guess I just, I was just at over turf and we had some great discussions with administration about science technology labs and all the great things they're planning. And I was really excited. And then I see this and I'm like, wait a minute. I thought, so I'm really caught off guard by this whole discussion. And I'm really upset to find out that that plan did not happen. And, I mean, I want, I mean, that technology, the science technology, I think even things were ordered. And that was exciting for the STEM process and the STEM initiative at CLO. So those classrooms that they're currently in, they would not allow any space at all for Edge. So...
So this would interfere?
Right.
Is this question from CLO here?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Ms. Whitehurst?
Ms. Whitehurst?
I don't know that the, I don't know why the portable would hurt the easily, I mean, the CLO STEM initiative, but...
Well, I think CLO was planning on Edge leaving and had the whole science lab set up and ordered equipment.
I don't think, but I'm not sure that was ever official, right?
I got you.
I mean, I don't think there was ever an official, there was never an official, "We're leaving" then. Go ahead.
I thought there was a letter.
There wasn't anything in writing. There was a conversation that occurred before spring break. I went back and I was talking to Ms. Parsons and we were talking about timelines. And she had told us at that time that June 30th, and she said, "It'll probably be like midnight that night, but we'll be out by June 30th." So Mr. Tucker and I went ahead and we ordered all new science lab tables, projectors, chairs, everything to move our science classes out to those areas. There's two science labs. I mean, that's what they were built for.
Right.
And it was spent about 10,000 of our discretionary money, which with a small school, was pretty much almost half of what we had. And now that's going to have to be set aside somewhere until we can move into that space. And, you know, and that's, that's not my decision. I mean, that's up to the board. So then we, just a couple of weeks ago, we found out that that's not what's going to happen. So that kind of, kind of, you know, put just a, called us off guard too, especially after we had spent that amount of money.
Is it affecting your master's schedule?
It doesn't affect the master's schedule. It affects location of classrooms and what the science classes have the ability to do. Because if you've, in those, you know, when you, when you start talking about trying to get labs set up in just a regular classroom, in those small classrooms and those original wings, there's just not enough space for a lot of the materials and stuff. So that's, you know, we were really excited, actually took the science teachers back there and, you know, and, you know, it just, but that's...
Disappointing.
It is. It's very disappointing. And the only thing I can say about my concern with having a portable, we have no classroom space available for additional classrooms for them to use right now. If we did, I would be very concerned about high school students being in with sixth graders. And I think you would have a lot of parents here about ninth, 10th, and 11th graders intermixing with the sixth grader. We have it. It's worked out very well with these last two years. They, they're on their part. We're on our part. There's really no intermixing other than at the buses and they stay on one side and our kids stay in the cafeteria. So there's really no intermixing of those students. And that's the way it needs to stay. So, you know, if there's a portable put, it needs to make sure that it doesn't interfere with anything with our sixth graders. Because I don't want to have the parents with having 11th graders around sixth graders.
So the placement, you were speaking of would be in between two of their existing wings?
The placement for the portable is inside a fenced-in area that is, it's actually at the end, the very end of it, that it's fenced in would be, that area would still be self-contained. And I had Mr. Getchel...
David, is that the old junior parking lot or the old senior parking lot?
It would be the old.
It's not in the parking lot.
I mean, when we were in school there, I'm trying to...
It's the old junior parking lot.
Between the two new buildings.
Right.
And that, that would not interfere with anything that we're doing. Anything else, any other location on the campus would completely interfere with, with what's going on with our sixth graders.
Okay, can I just summarize what I understand? I understand that there's a location. You're recommending if we put up a portable and it's okay with you. And that you were counting, you were planning for Edge to leave June 30th, and now it's December 31st. Is that correct?
So it was, we were, we were also counting on leaving, you know?
Oh, I know.
And I was always speaking at the time.
Is it December 31st now? Anticipated. What's the date there?
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, Lisa, could you come up, tell us what happened? I mean, what's, what's that?
So the contract with Charter School Capital fell through as they decided not to do business in the state of Florida at this time.
Who's Charter School Capital? Tell us who that is.
They were going to do the financing for the renovations for the building that has already been purchased on College Road. So when that fell through, we reverted back to our contract, which said that we would give one year notice, or you would give us one year notice to say, "Get out of the space that we're in." So it just fell back to being in that space. It is certainly of my, my regret and embarrassment that I had that conversation with, with Ms. Whitehurst, that, that was, that was what I was expecting up until after, about a month, about several weeks after our discussions. Certainly not our plan to stay put, but certainly manageable. And I do want to say that they have been amazing to work with, both the, both the principal and assistant principal and the staff, the bus, all the transportation people. They're being great.
So you don't know when you're moving out?
I do not know the answer to that.
Yeah, okay.
So it actually makes a big difference on what, what's on the agenda today is asking for an extension on the charter. So in order for the financing to happen, so AmerisBank, who holds our contract right now, excuse me, our mortgage right now, has tentatively agreed to give us a construction loan, but they want to see more than three years left on our charter. So that's, that's what's on your agenda today for that. And then as far as the portable space, that was recommended to be on the agenda as well. But I did send this, I'll pass this around, but this is Building 14 right here and Building 13. And right here is the space that we're talking about adding, adding a portable. If we had the additional enrollment, the current offices in this space right here, the only other addition that would seem to make sense would be a portable here that would face this way. And that would be for office space, not for student space. If, if we, and I have not, I apologize, I have not even had a chance to get down to work with you on that. You were tied up when I was available and vice versa. So, but, and I'm not even presenting that as an option. It's not on your agenda. And I'd like the chance to discuss that with them before we...
Can we break this up, Madam Chairman, and vote on approving the charter and then look at this separate? Or are we going to do it all in one eye?
Well, I, the only thing on the agenda is the charter. That's the only thing on the agenda for discussion and approval today.
So we can agree to do the 15-year...
That's what we're, that's what's on the agenda. Separate from the 15 years.
But not the portables.
Separate from, we're not approving anything about portables or anything about timeline. We're just approving a 15-year old charter.
I just need a little more time because she showed me the map prior to the meeting. And it looked like there were some, some space, but she said there's an old retention pond and things that I'd have to talk to Scott and Jim a little more about to get more information.
Absolutely.
If we could, if we could, I'd like to make a motion that we extend the charter.
I second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor to approve item C-12. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just, yeah, I had a couple of questions, Madam Chair.
Sure.
Plans on moving ahead, Lisa? I mean, what's just sort of the thought? I know you don't know for sure, but...
Absolutely. So what this does, so AmerisBank currently holds the mortgage. And they have tentatively agreed to give the construction loan as well. But we only had three more years left on our charter. That would not be good business sense of any bank to give us a loan with that short of charter. So now that you have approved the extension in the charter, it gives us the ability to move forward with that.
Call Emily Blevins and get it done.
Yes.
And then we'll...
Well, I mean, you know...
She makes a lot of things happen.
Yeah, no, just, you know, you know, it, everyone wins.
Yes.
When our charters win. So everyone wins. So we want you to win. And, and, so, you know, I would just ask, come to us as things are progressing. You don't owe it to us. It's not a mandatory thing, but it just helps us know. And knowledge empowers us to help. And so, you know, just help us, help us know where things are and how we can...
I'm not normally a gal that counts my chickens before the eggs hatch. So I, it is my hope that the construction loan would, would go through and quickly get that construction done. And I would love to be in, in that facility immediately. And publicly, I would like to apologize to Ms. Whitehurst over saying yes. And that was what I expected, to be out of there at June 30th. And that didn't happen.
So Lisa, the AmerisBank construction loan is going to take the place of what? This other organization that's not doing business in Florida?
Right. Charter School Capital spends a lot of time in Florida and at the charter school conferences. And they, they try to secure. But there were some things that didn't match up, in my opinion. And one was the, the fact that the, when those two loans were rolled together, that, that the payment would be based on our enrollment. I mean, we were sold that repeatedly. And then when they came up and said, "Well, no, here's the loan payment," would be $20,000, which was a month, which was approximately 20% of, of our estimated enrollment. So if we didn't hit that enrollment, we had previously been told verbally that it would adjust based on our enrollment. And in our size, I mean, with the 5% holdback as, as well for the district. And then, you know, so 20%, that, that leaves me, you know, a very small percentage left for salaries and benefits. So...
We've got some good hometown people with Ameris that I'm certain will help.
Or the other. Emily's fantastic over at First Coast as well. So...
Okay, well, are you done, Mr. Roach?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just wanted to say, you know, keep us in the loop as much as is possible.
Absolutely.
And, and we'll help where we can. So...
Absolutely. But I did feel it would be inappropriate to come to you until I had even talked to the principal yet to, to look, look at the spaces and see what we, we could negotiate together and, and then come to you with a formal proposal.
Right.
Okay, well, the motion and second is on the floor to approve item C-12.
And it just for the, the continuance of the charter?
Yes.
Because it does address the three portables and that's not going to be...
But that's in the letter. We're approving the charter.
Just the charter?
Right. We're not approving the letter.
Okay. That's fine. Just for the record.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Carrie's five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will continue speaking with Edge High School about whether or not we can do some portables. Maybe we can get it on the next agenda for discussion. Just, I'd like to hear from our staff about it. And maybe Ms. Parsons has, but just for discussion under new business, adding a portable for Edge, something like that. Is that okay with the board? Just so that it's on there, that we can talk about it?
Sure. Madam Chair, I'd like to say too, just to reassure my, my friends from CLO, you know, we're about district schools. Okay, so, so know that I'm about district schools. But if there's a way, I like it when everybody wins. So if there's a way everybody can win, that's a good thing. So, you know, so anyway, that's it.
Moving right along. We are out of regular session and into emergency session. Lord, we have one emergency item. And that is a revised copy of our personnel matters. Summer work hours for transportation employees. Sorry, it's not the personnel matter. They're attached, but it's the last page in our pack. Board approval for additional work hours as needed for transportation employees.
I make a motion that we approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Carrie's five zero. We're out of emergency session, back into regular session. We have no old business to discuss. Under new business, discussion, input, action on retention of allocation for board auditor. Who put this on? Can I?
I did.
You requested?
Yep, yep, kind of. That was the last.
Okay, well, I have a, I have requested a report for my auditor, which I am going to share with you now. I can't stress enough the importance of this position for us. I spoke with our attorney last night, who agreed with me that it's a good idea for our district to have a board auditor. I would like to give you a minute to read, read this over. There are some serious things on here that the auditor has been trying to deal with.
Mr. Attorney, I would like to maybe hear that from you. I mean, is that something that you normally comment on, whether or not you agree with employment?
No, I think the conversation was about the statutory parameters and the availability for a board to determine if the board wants an auditor position or not. That is certainly permissible under the statutes. And, you know, as the board is a fiduciary, it has a fiduciary responsibility to the district, it's a good idea for oversight. In what form the oversight comes is ultimately up to the board to decide.
Okay.
The board can choose to hire an auditor. The board can rely on other means of information that an auditor may or may not be able to provide that stream of information. But I think everyone can agree that oversight is, is a good thing. And the, the statute allows for it if the board chooses. It is not required that the board have its own auditor. But that, that's not a decision for me to make. And I, I would not comment one way or the other on what, what the board must do when the statute is permissive. That, that's a function for the board to decide. But I agree that it protects you, board members, to have a, an oversight function when evaluating how the dollars of this district are spent.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to discontinue the allocation for board auditor.
Motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second it for the discussion or for action, whatever.
Okay, again, I can't stress the importance of this. I really believe it's important. We've had roadblocks thrown at us. We have had the roadblocks because that's our employee and she's been blocked. And I think we all know that. And I can't stress the importance of having a board auditor enough. I'll go with what the majority of the board thinks. But look at the report.
Well, Kathy, I'd be interested because, you know, this is, you know, obviously you've championed this from the beginning, which, you know, years ago, this isn't recent. I mean, years ago, you've, you've said the same thing and I respect that.
Five years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
Five years ago.
Yeah, five years ago. So, so, you know, I, I respect where you are because you've been there and you're consistent on it. Walk me through these findings and, and help me understand, you know, just talk me through the ones that you would see would be most, you know, most notable. You don't have to go through all of them, but the ones that you find to be, you know, most noteworthy.
Recommendations are pretty strong.
Yeah, there's some strong recommendations. Just read down the recommendations that have been ignored or not implemented or whatever. Generally accepted accounting principles were used. Red book has been used and it's not being followed. Red book needs to be followed in all circumstances. Sure. Well, this is the opinion of the board auditor. That's why we should have a board auditor because different people have different opinions. But fortunately, with finance, there's a black and white. Okay? It's not like most things we deal with, there's gray areas. With finance, it's black and white. There's numbers, there's rules, there's the red book, there's the GAAP, there's, it's black and white. It's not feely touchy, any of it. It's one of the reasons I like it because the answers are there. Now, there can be people who disagree, but I really think some of this should be looked into rather than eliminating the position and taking this and burying it.
We're audited every year by Auditor General's Office.
That's not, we...
We do, we do have an unqualified opinion every year. We are following GAAP and generally, we're following what we need to follow.
Excuse me.
Rhonda, you need, Rhonda, you need to...
You have to be recognized and you have to go to the microphone. You're fine? You can come to the microphone. However, the board has no control whatsoever over the auditors that are here from the, from the DOE. We can't, we can't tell them what to do. We can't ask them to look at something.
Yeah, 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 please.
Please do. We have no, they, they don't work for us. They work for the DOE.
They do not work for the DOE. They're from the State of Florida Auditor General's Office. You can talk with them about anything. You can ask them to look at anything. We all have. If we feel there's an area of concern, we ask them to look at that. They're already back here for the year that's fixing to end. They left in March. They're back in May. They'll, they'll be here for 10 months, months, three to six of them. You can, you have complete ability to talk to them about anything. We have several board members that do talk to them. And we do get an unqualified opinion every year.
Well, why do you think the legislatures have put this into law then? And there are many school districts that not only have an auditor, they have a whole auditing department.
I don't have a problem with having auditor, our entire board auditing department. That's not a problem. It's been in statute for many, many years. You can if you want to. But we are a smaller district, medium size, that gets audited every year. In my opinion, that is for districts that do not get audited every year by the Auditor General's Office.
Well, don't they have to get their own audit if they don't get audited by the Auditor General's?
They hire a CPA firm. They pay them money and they can, them control what they want them to look at. We, they look at everything for us.
Right. Well...
Everything. Yes, ma'am. That's why. And there's always going to be findings. If they don't have time to look at everything every year, they bring in more and more people. And the Auditor General of the state of Florida puts them on specific items every year that they want to spend more attention on. They look at everything, Ms. Kathy, everything.
Okay.
They're here now. If you want me to call them in and you can speak to them.
But why, all right, we get auditors in 10 months a year for free, I assume, from the Auditor General?
That's correct.
Because we're a small, poor county. And the bigger counties that have money have, is that correct?
It's nothing to do with your finances.
All right, it's the size.
It's the size.
Because we're small, we don't have to hire a CPA firm.
We're medium-sized. That's correct.
Well, I thought it was small with Nefec.
No, we're a medium-sized district.
Okay.
Yeah. We're one of the smaller, medium-sized, but we are a medium-sized district.
Okay.
I'm sorry, it's, it's defined by state. 6,000 or higher FTE is a medium-sized district.
Well, then...
6,000 to 35,000 is medium.
I'm confused about Nefec then, but that's another, whole nother.
It has nothing to do with Nefec.
Well, I thought they were for small, but it doesn't matter. That's irrelevant. The bigger, the not small to medium districts, the larger districts have to go out and hire because they're larger and they have more money and they get more money presumably. And we get it for free.
That's correct.
From the Auditor General's Office.
That's correct.
Either way, the law allows the board to hire their own auditor.
That's correct. That's not in question.
But there's a reason.
I'm just saying that we haven't...
Oh, you're not opposed to a board auditor?
I'm not. And I haven't, and we are following GAAP.
I know, I should have talked to you first.
We're following GAAP. It's, it's all, I think, has a lot to do with the way things are being handled. There's nothing against the position. And that's all I have to say.
Madam Chair.
Yes?
Yeah, I, I placed this on, on the agenda after our, our meeting a few weeks ago because of, of clarity purposes. This position has caused confusion among the staff and with the board. And where there's disruption, there is eventually destruction in any organization. That's just a, that's just a fundamental fact. So we have got to reduce the disruption of the position. We have worked hard. Board, I, I want to thank you so much. We've had three or four workshops on clarifying the job description. I want to thank you for that. I think that's good due diligence. We've taken this position, I know I have taken this position seriously in that I've attended those workshops. I've had input. And, you know, I've done my due diligence on it. What I'm bringing today is this. One is, there will have to be, if the board chooses to, to fund this, we will have to go back to the drawing board and we have, we will have to bring some more clarity to this position. Now, that is just a fact.
Absolutely.
I mean, if, if we're going to fund it, we will have to bring clarity to it. We'll have to bring clarity to it on the auditor's end, whoever that may be, and on the district's end, and how that position interacts with all the leaders within our district. I have a financial question. I mean, I, you know, I had Rhonda pull on an annual basis, of course, our position's not been here full year yet, but on an annual basis, we would spend roughly a little over $95,000 in salary and related benefits for the position. That's $95,000. So...
Does that include the internal audit that we took away from her job description?
This includes, this excludes funding the position as a personnel allocation.
Okay, so that includes the $30,000 that we have to pay still in...
No, this, this is, this is personnel money for that, for that particular allocation.
Okay.
So here's, here's where I am. And this is strictly a business issue for me. For $95,000, are we getting $95,000 out of that position? Now, let me define how I think about this. And we put it on here. I put it on here for discussion. So help me think through it. That means, are we saving that much money? Are we, through auditing practices and finding money, are we protecting ourselves from, in a fiduciary way, from, from potential lawsuits or grievances or, or breakdowns in a very real way? Are we getting $95,000 out of that position?
No, we haven't.
So that's...
But that's not, that's not the position's fault. But that's not, that's not the position's fault. It's because of the roadblocks thrown in the way that most of the board members will-
There's nothing in it.
That's my cup.
Most of the board members will agree with that there have been roadblocks and problems. So, no, we haven't got enough money's worth, but that's not the board auditor's fault. She came to us at the first workshop asking for policy. She had, she had the general auditor, whatever, lotta, lotta, and it said the first thing she needed was policy. We never did policy. If there were policy, guess what? There'd be rules.
Madam Chair.
There'd be something to, for the auditor to, whatever, go ahead.
Can we call for a vote? I just-
Well, I just have a question. Everybody hasn't had their say.
This is, yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, and I think I had a little bit of clarity for the first time when Rhonda said, you know, that she's not opposed to this position, right? It's just the way it's been handled. And I guess my question is, how could we have handled, or how could it have been handled differently for the board auditor to have been successful?
I need to remind too, this is about, this is about the position, not about, not about a personnel issue.
I know, but, I mean, she, she brought that up and that's why I asked the question.
I don't really feel comfortable in going into any of those details because like he said, it's not about a person. I will say, when I said I was not opposed to the position, I'm not. I don't feel it's necessary. I feel like it's an extra expense, it's not necessary. When you look down through here and you see things like deteriorating financial condition, no, no, ma'am. We're one of the best in the state as far as our financial condition ratio. As far as a going concern, we are easily a going concern. Clay County has a 2%, we have a 9% fund balance. We are in excellent financial condition and I am, this is the first I've seen this and I'm highly irritated right now and I don't feel comfortable speaking right now.
I saw it too, I mean, this is brand new.
I requested that Ms. Thompson put that together.
We got an email, it was emailed a couple of weeks ago.
I requested personally that she do this.
I didn't get this.
Well, I thought, yeah.
I thank her for it, but we're going to sit here and belabor this until-
I think we, we spend $95,000, $95,000 here and there. I mean, I didn't have, I didn't think to make a list. I could probably pick off the consent agenda, things that nobody's really even read, the total $95,000, but I'm not gonna, I'm not, I don't want to fight and I'm not going to argue. It's the majority, majority rules. Anybody have anything else to say? Anybody in the audience, board members, yes?
Yes, Madam Chair. The other things I was going to talk about is, is some of the taskings that we had in mind for this position when we developed. I've spent some time over the last few weeks not knowing which way the board would go, not knowing how this would end up, but just saying, okay, the things that are important to us, when we started this process, now Kathy, to your credit, five years ago, some of us a little late to the dance, right? So, you know, about a year or two ago for us, one of the concerns were the 18 schools and their internal fund account. I spent quite a bit of time with Shannon and Rhonda over the last few weeks talking about how we could skin that cat in, within their department. And I think they have a plan were we to choose to adjust this because remember, as this position exists today, doesn't mean it has to exist in the same format tomorrow. There can be adjustments to it. We can still have an auditor, but have it change and morph in shape so it's a little bit more focused and a little bit more intentional, right? And it's not so broad. But I think we can get the schools, all the, all the, the bookkeepers at the schools trained. We've talked about a training program, two to three, four day training program here in the office. We've talked about spot checks, accountability, what's that?
I'm just talking to myself.
Just don't answer yourself, Jay. And then we're talking about periodic spot checks for, for accounting principles there and, and for the sake of keeping track of the monies. And so, I think, I think they have a good plan for that because that was a concern of ours. When we entered this road, part of the concern was that. I think, and I, Rhonda and Shannon aren't ready to give a report on this and I didn't ask them to, I was just simply asking for the sake of my edification if it was doable. And it is doable within their staff with no additional cost to the district except perhaps some travel dollars. So, that would probably be about what it would take for that area. So, for those of you who are concerned about that, know that that function can be accomplished internally and I, I think done, done quite well.
Well, I would ask, why hasn't it been before today?
Me too.
And I'd like, I'd like to hear that plan before I make a vote on whether or not we need a board auditor.
I'd like to know why it got to this point before we have some internal controls.
I put it on the agenda, let's be very clear on this. I put it on the agenda because of the confliction and the disruption that the position is called within this office. So, let's be real clear, that's the elephant in the room. I did it and I did it for that reason, because we can't continue with disruption. That is not healthy as an organization, that's not healthy for individuals, that's not healthy for us. So, that's just not good, it's just not good governance.
Well, I agree to that.
Yeah, it's just not good governance. So, I put it on, I put it on the discussion and to be looked at for that reason. Now, I think we could give Rhonda and Shannon some time, a couple of weeks, they could probably come up with a plan to, what we talked about, you know, develop that deal within the schools, right? Putting them on the spot right now, I don't know that y'all would expect that, right? I mean, that's not necessarily, would be necessarily fair.
So, would they be auditing themselves or-
No, no, what they would, no, Rhonda, do you have something to add?
I'm sorry, I don't understand all this.
It's fine.
We have not in the past audited internal accounts because we do hire an outside CPA firm to do it. The principal at a school has the authority over the bookkeeper at the school. All we receive is an inter, a monthly financial statement that the bookkeeper fills out and the principal signs off on. We have not, you know, it hasn't been on our job descriptions to go into the school and because we did have an, an outside internal CPA firm auditing them, we have not gone out to the schools on a regular basis. We have, in the last two years, started putting plans out there for the schools and their bookkeepers when these issues started coming up that were found by the CPA firm. We had all the schools go to a similar software. In the past, we had some that were doing it manual, some that had EPS, some that had McAfee. Everybody was on a different system. So, starting July 1 of last year, and, and we even as a district, as a finance officer, we footed the bill for everybody going to the same system. We now have access to that system so that any of us in my office can go in and look at their records online at any time. We have talked about the four of us because we finally got a staff together because it's been a, it's been a few years of turmoil since 2008. There's been a steady stream of rotation
Right.
and we're, we've got things to a good point now. And we talked about the four of us going out and doing spot checks and just, they, they would be random, we would have the principal's consent because bookkeepers are not up under the finance department. If that's something that we wanted to do with allocations, put them up under finance, we would have a lot more that we could do with them. But right now, that bookkeeper belongs to the principal. So, you know, we would have to get permission from them to do spot checks and things like that. But it is something that we feel is, after Mr. Wright came and talked to us, that it is something that we would be happy to take on.
See, this is why we need a board auditor, permission. Permission to look at the internal accounts or to train the bookkeeper from the principal?
No, ma'am, because that is now, that was part of her job description. Y'all wrote the job description and you gave her permission to do all that.
I know.
Okay.
No, I know, no, no, no. You would need permission, that's what I'm saying. You would need permission.
From the principals, I don't think there would be any principal that would deny us the right to come and look at their internal accounts.
Unless we move the allocation. If we move the allocation from a principal under finance, then they, in an organizational sense, belong to you.
And we have started being in on the interview process too. So, we have been working with the principals to try to be more involved because we haven't felt like that there have been the best people in those positions. So, we're trying to go that route. Stacy in our office has attended the last, there's been two openings this year. We've got two people retiring and she's been part of the interview process.
Good, that's good.
Stacy has?
Stacy has, and we, we didn't have that before. We weren't invited or included in that process when they hired somebody. So, we think, you know, now that we're opening it up and they're getting more used to us being able to come and do that, that we should be able to help out some.
Well, I, I think, you know, as we started down this road, most of us, what caught our attention were the internal accounts. That is no doubt what rang the bell, saying, hey, we, we've got to fix it. And for, for myself, I viewed the board auditor position as a way to fix it. Now, I do understand because, you know, Susan made a report that, you know, she can't develop a system and then audit herself. I get that, that's not, that's not reasonable. So, but for me walking down this road initially, I can't speak for anyone else, this was a big deal. So, the fact that, you know, we've spent some time together and we've talked it through, there's a way to provide good accountability, spot check, this kind of stuff, I feel, I feel good about that process. Now, let's be real clear. Rules and processes are to help keep honest people honest.
Right.
Right? So, if you have a dishonest person out there, they're going to find a way to slip through the system. So, there is no 100% fix either way you go, right? There's just this.
To theft, but there's a way to find it.
There's a way to find it.
And also, if checks and balances are in place, it's less likely. If you leave money open and it's easy to take, more honest people are tempted to do so.
I, I agree with you.
That's correct, and they did have rules in place and, you know, that would be at the school level with the bookkeeper and the AP and the principal. There are rules in place and everything and they are audited every year and those things were found if they weren't following the rules.
From, from a organizational standpoint, Ms. Decabelas, let me ask you this. If we left, if we left the school accountants, bookkeepers underneath the principals in the school, we could still say to our, our accounting team, you have freedom to go in and spot check
Absolutely.
without notification.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, so we don't even have to move this organizationally. We can simply say, hey, we expect you to walk in and to, and to, and to check this out second and third level down.
Absolutely.
I.e., they're showing a receipt from a, from a football coach having sold footballs for $1,000, you know, they need to trace it back, well, what kind of receipt was given to the football coach?
And I'd like to answer that two ways. With the EPS software that Rhonda alluded to, that each, each school is now using, one of the neat things that now the district has access to be able to look after a football game at a high school, a home game, you know there should be a certain amount of money deposited within a couple of days.
Right.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday after that football game, that deposit should be made. If they notice that it hasn't been made, that's a red flag, calling the school, where are we? We're coming to check. You can look at those things and see what's going on without having to wait a month. They're able to see that. But as to your question, can we ask the principals? Absolutely, they would have the authority for someone from finance to come in, spot check at any time. We also do a monthly checklist. On that monthly checklist, we can remind them that finance will be coming out for monthly spot checks. We will not tell you which school it's going to be at, but they will be coming. That can be added, no problem.
Okay, all right, very good, thank you.
When our auditor first started and the conflicts first developed, I seem to remember that the finance department was very, 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 very busy, very, very busy, couldn't spend a lot of time, whatever, that they were just very busy. And I don't know how, are we going to give you another allocation to help with? I don't know how you're going to do this.
No, but we have, we have filled all of our allocations now.
They weren't all filled?
No.
Okay, so we have put more people that we're paying in the finance department. We're paying more people in the finance department.
We had that many people before, we're just now getting back up to where we were.
But, but, yeah, but we weren't spending the money and now we're spending the money next year for these people. However, correct? Right, we fill the positions, we have all kinds of positions that aren't filled. And they're, you know, whatever, filled whenever.
Can I address that? We had an employee that was retiring out of finance. There was a period of time where that position was not filled. The position had been filled, then vacated, and now they are back up to full staff. Does that answer your question?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Ms. Thompson, would you like to say anything?
I would encourage you, Ms. Thompson, keep it associated with the position, right? Okay.
Just a few things that, as to what was, has been said. As far as the $95,000 goes, $3,000, I'm assuming of that is insurance, which I don't receive. So, that is put back into the insurance fund. Additionally, there is the audit fee that we would have to hire outside because the state does not do our internal accounts audit for free.
No, I'm sorry, because I clarified that. We, we took that off of your job description plate. You're not doing it, correct?
Oh, but I could.
No, we already said, you said you couldn't in the last workshop.
No, I couldn't train and audit.
They're going to train, she can audit.
Agreed with me.
But we had a workshop that discussed that. I remember specifically, we said, oh, we're going to hire the, the internal audit company that we've always used and that would be an additional $30,000.
Yeah, yes, yes, Miss Cummings, the, the discussion was, the problem was this, is when we hired the internal auditor, we thought she could go out, train and audit these people. Then we found out that she can't audit herself if she did the training.
Correct.
So, she can audit, but she cannot train and audit. Or she could just train, but not audit.
We made that decision, we made that decision.
Because our auditors from the Auditor General, when something new comes in, they train us. So, they're not truly auditing their own work just because you trained somebody. That's not your work. You train somebody to do it, they're doing it and they're doing it correctly, then you're auditing whether they're doing it correctly.
Because, yeah, because the training isn't a gotcha process. It's to, it's to get them to standard.
Right.
And the Auditor General's Office does train our staff when something new comes down. Or if they feel like we're doing something wrong, they train us in the right way to do it. It's part of the process.
Right, and, and so long as you're at an arms length transaction and you're not actually showing them how to do a bank reconciliation, they just need to understand that that has to be done and things of that nature. That brings the cost, just $3,000 for the insurance and $30,000.
No, 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 that's what I'm saying, that's incorrect. If I, we clarified this, it's $95,000 for the salary and the benefits, an additional $30,000 for the internal audit company that we hire. So, the actual cost of internal accounts period is $125,000. $30,000 is for the internal audit company and 95 is for your salary.
It's not just for internal accounts.
Right, but I'm saying that, that doesn't have, that was the last 10 minutes of an hour and a half meeting.
Right, but it was, yeah, it was decided, I just want to clarify, I don't want to-
I don't think it was voted on, but we, we did discuss it.
Ms. Douglas, was it voted on? Or was it discussed anonymously that we all said, okay, she won't do the internal audit? Because that was very specific to me.
I think it was a workshop, so I'm not sure.
It wasn't voted on and it was very clear, but what I'm hearing is that now our finance department is going to train and set up and that would make our board auditor okay to do the $30,000 worth of audits.
And not only that, but look at the other things like possibly the audit findings that are repeating and the Judicial Audit Legislative Committee. You know, we had that this year and we'll have it again next year because we have those audit findings repeating. And the concern with that is, that's a very touch and go area because they do have the ability to remedy by withholding state funds. I haven't shared all that. What you have here in front of you is really just what I've already given you this year. It's just a reiteration and things like the going concern, that has to do with one of our charter schools that I worked on. So, we do have these items. I mean, I can go pull the audit report and show it to you. If you remember, we discussed Edge at some length. And probably, you know, not with the superintendent because that's not the focus, but that was kind of allocated to me as well and so that was part of the issue. So, if we're looking, if we take the last 10 minutes off that hour and a half meeting, then, and we put, give me back the audit, then we're looking at about $62,000 for my salary. And I would say to be able to do that audit, become acquainted with the staff, which I have done a lot of, and so I just want, you know, everything clarified and make sure that everybody's clear on exactly what has happened. And I know there's been some issues with communication, but my hope was that with the, and I think we were very close, that we could get the- and I think we were very close, um, that we could get the discussion opened again. Like, you'll see, that was part of my very first, um, or not the very first, we had the workshop, but then, uh, on nine twelve, you can look at that email and you can see that, I planned on addressing the concerns with finance, which I thought we were all clear on, and there wasn't any open issues, but we did develop a lack of communication in some of those areas. But that was my intent, and it still would be, because I think that that is the proper way to do it. That's the way the state does it, that's the way we all do it. At the end of the audit, excuse me, my mouth is dry, um, you, you, you discuss the findings as well as during the audit, you know? So it's not, it's not a gotcha, um, or I never intended it to be. And so, once again, I spoke with, um, a board member, and it, basically, my idea is, you know, I think that, and I don't mean to sound conceited, but, you know, I think I'm easy to get along with, and, and, you know, so my thought is that I can offer a lot, and from, what I've gathered from the staff is, they're looking for somebody to help them with particular issues they may have questions on, and that's, that's the perfect scenario for an auditor, because that is our goal, is to help, um, anyone, you know? We don't, we don't leave you with a finding and you have to dig your way out. So I just, you know, I just wanna share some of those things. See if there was anything. Oh, as far as the disruption, I totally understand where you're coming from, uh, Mr. Wright, but at the same, at the same time, I want you to think about, and I only have this, uh, this analogy at the moment. If you're cleaning out a closet, you're gonna make a bigger mess to begin with than you had originally, because you're taking everything out, you're sorting through it, and that's part of the, uh, process. I certainly don't want to create disruption, and I don't, I would hope that they, that finance doesn't want to either. I don't think that's any of our goals. So in, and I guess in conclusion, it's, you know, Rhonda understands the idea, and she was supportive of me, in that I can't both audit and train. But all I can, all I, or what I can do, which I think is significant, um, because I love my profession, is provide recommendations. Now, it's up to finance and the superintendent to determine whether they take those recommendations, especially if it relates to procedures. So, um, the board is more on the policy side. So I guess that's, um, that's all, but I would, I would stress again, and, and the superintendent and I did have the opportunity to speak to each other, uh, one evening, and I believe, and of course, correct me, Ms. Chris, while I feel I'm wrong, that we had discussed certain things like the, um, repeating audit, audit finding, audit findings, and, um, the, things like the, uh, Justice, I can't think of the name, JALC. And so that's the one that is really brand new on the horizon now, that does have a lot of power behind it. And I haven't done a report particularly for the board on that, but they do have the power, um, Charlie and I have done some email back and forth. They do have, he's seen the, um, literature that shows where they have the power to, you know, come in and mess with your finances and everything, so.
And all of the day black findings will clear it up.
Right, but, okay, that's good. Um, but they will be, we will have the same process next year because we have those findings from this year rolling forward for the third or fourth year. So I just believe there's work to do, and, um, but it's, again, all about the kids, so you guys, you know, that's your job to do the best you can for the children.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Susan.
I agree, our job is to do the best we can for the children. We are statutorily commanded as board, as a board, to watch the money. That is our biggest and most important job. The other job is policy. Those are the only two things we're supposed to do. On our own, a board member has no power whatsoever. It's only as a body that we control finance, or should control finance, and policy. That's our job. Now, not only do we have our hundred million dollar budget, but we're responsible for NIFEC as well. We are the fiduciary, they are our responsibility financially. I don't know about you guys, but I sure don't, I'm, I'm no accounting, but not enough to keep an eye on everything we're supposed to be keeping an eye on. And that's, we represent the public. The Auditor General is in, is in Tallahassee, but the five of us are elected to represent the people in our community and to take care of the money that's given to educate the children. We're allowed to hire an auditor to help us with that responsibility. Anybody on the board have anything else to say?
I'd like, I'd like to ask the board attorney, statutorily, as, as, as a superintendent, they make personnel recommendations and legally are not required to give a reason for their recommendations. Is it advisable to a board member if you make a recommendation or decision that you should legally not give any public reason?
I'm not aware of any requirement that would, um, force you to give a reason.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
One of the things that I'm interested in is, you know, I, I do believe that, um, we, obviously, we do have fiduciary responsibility, that is a fact. Um, the way the, the, the job is currently configured, the position, um, just personally, I would like to see that different. Um, I think we could bring more clarity to it. That would probably require a, a, uh, looking again at, um, the financial compensation plan as well as the benefits. But, but I, I think we can get what we want done, perhaps at a better savings for the people, and perhaps, um, with a little bit more clarity and, and ease of operation. A- as a board hired person working with the district. So for that reason, I will, um, I will probably vote to not, um, allocate the funds for this position because I would like us to look at a revamped situation, um, you know, in the coming weeks or months. So, something that's shifted and changed, so it better, I, I think is clearer and, and meets our response, our responsibility. That's my two cents.
Can we have a vote?
Well, we have a motion and second on the floor, but I'd like, I'm just asking, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to understand. If we have the allocation, that's what we're talking about, the allocation, not the salary, not the job description, not anything.
But doesn't the allocation involve all of that? I mean, isn't that, when we allocate, we allocate dollars.
Right.
So, so that's what I'm saying. So I think when we say we allocate it, we're allocating at the current situation that we have with the expectations we have.
Only if we renew a contract at that much. We, we have the option to renew a contract every year. We have an agreement with our board attorney. At the end of his contract, we could decide to knock twenty, I mean, not that he'd stay with us, but we could decide to change the contract. And not, not twenty grand off, so, so I, with contracts ending June thirtieth, I don't see the problem in renegotiating a contract or drawing up new contract or whatever. The allocation, I don't understand why we, do we have an allocation for board attorney? Yes.
No, it's a.
Ms. Decabellis, do we have an allocation for the board attorney? Yeah, see, that's what we should have had with, with the auditor. It shouldn't be an allocation.
Do we need to address that now?
Yes.
No, not now.
We got a, a motion and a second on the floor.
No, but here's, here's why it matters. It matters, if we wanna make this a contract, then we remove it as an allocation, and then we renegotiate it as a contract, much like we do the attorney. That's why it matters. If we, if, so if we vote yes on this right now, we've just reaffirmed the allocation for another year.
No, the motion is not to reallocate.
Right, I'm just going both ways, right? Explaining the implications, implications both ways. And so the other implication is, if we say we want to move toward a contractual arrangement, which is different.
Totally.
Which is different, which we can do, all right? Then we would need to vote no on this, and then, in a few weeks, engage in that, kind of, am I right, Ms. Decabellis? Okay, so I'm right on that? Okay, so, if you wanna move in a different direction, we, we have to vote no on the allocation and then move in a different direction. That's, that's how it has to go. Yes, ma'am?
I'm confused.
I'm sorry. Okay, when you vote on an allocation, help me, Ms. Decabellis, the, the district, the, right now, Charlie's not a district employee. Douglas and Hedstrom is on a contract basis with the board to be our legal services. Ms. Jorgensen is requesting and, and has argued to her credit from the beginning.
From the beginning.
From the beginning, that the board auditor should be in the same employment, um, category, a contract employee to the board.
No, it, no taxes held out, no benefits, just?
They're ten ninety-nine.
Ten ninety-nine.
Are they ten ninety-nine?
Yes, sir.
Y'all are ten ninety-nine?
Yes.
Right, so, so if you wanna go that route. Okay. To discontinue, that's correct, I'm just talking, I'm, I'm giving the implications on both sides. So, and I'm trying to help, Ms.
Help me.
Ms. Jane with this. So here's the deal, um, that, that's a little bit cleaner way to do it. It's, it's, uh, more of a, some, they, there are some advantages to it from the board standpoint. A little bit easier on the HR side, but if we vote to reallocate, she stays an employee of, or that position stays as, as, as an employee of the district, whoever were to fill that job.
Okay, so it's, Susan would have to reapply, or, I mean.
Either, either way, she's gonna have to be renewed or not renewed. That doesn't, she's not even the discussion. She has to be renewed or non-renewed, just a contract.
But if we say no to this allocation, then she doesn't have a job, right?
Well.
Well, even if she's, if we say, yeah, she does, 'cause she's got, she's gotta be renewed anyway. So it, it really affects us. It affects us. So, and I, I like the idea of it being contracted, I, that's a good thought, Captain.
I learned that from the beginning.
I like it being ours, so, Ms. Decabellis, am I wrong on this?
No, sir, what I would remind you is, um, when you tasked us with this piece, um, a meeting ago.
Right.
We have to make all of our recommendations to the board prior to the end of the fiscal year. We had this meeting and one additional meeting. The reason that it was put on the board agenda this time for you to discuss the allocation was if you chose not to have the allocation, then you have to move forward with not renewing the employee attached to the allocation. If you move to keep the allocation, then you have to tell me whether you are moving forward to keep the employee attached to the allocation, and we had to have all of that done before July one.
So we were gonna use this meeting to vote on the allocation.
Correct.
If we chose to keep it, then the next allocation, or the next meeting was gonna be to determine if we would retain our current board auditor or not.
That is correct.
So that's gonna happen anyway. That, that discussion's gonna happen no matter.
So that comes later.
That, that comes later, that's gonna happen regardless.
Not if we remove the allocation.
Not if we want a contract, though, if the majority of the board wants to contract with an auditor.
We add a contract and do an RFP and all that wonderful stuff.
We could do all that.
You're gonna add a contract, then you gotta go to new, new positions with the union.
No, we do RFP.
Yes.
We would have to do, we'd have to do an RFP, but that's, but that's, that's, that's part of the process.
That's right.
It's part of the process. So that's, that's not a, that's not a big, not a big deal. And certainly Susan could apply. I mean, obviously, there's no question that she could apply, so, and others can apply. So it would be an open RFP, so.
And there wouldn't be job description? It would be like, this is what has been my argument, we don't have a job description for the attorney. We contract with the attorney, the attorney knows how to be a lawyer. I didn't think we needed a job description for a professional auditor. We contract with the auditor, they know how to be an auditor. And that was my thought from the beginning. If we're ready, I'll call the question I'd like to clarify. If we remove the allocation, it doesn't mean we're removing the position. We can, majority of us, has to be three, at least three, agree to contract with someone the way we contract with our attorney, we can contract with an auditor, we could contract with an auditing firm. A firm could give us an RFP to come in and do this. So if we remove the allocation, that doesn't necessarily mean removing the position. It may mean, 'cause I'm gonna re, I'm gonna vote to remove the allocation because I think it should be contract, and I thought that from the beginning. But then I'd like it on the next agenda to input, discussion, and action, however it's gotta be worded, as to whether or not we wanna contract with a board auditor.
Okay.
Okay? Are we ready to call the question?
Yes, I am.
All those in favor of removing the allocation for the board auditor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Carries five zero, and on the next agenda will be the discussion, input, and action on whether or not to hire, not hire, but.
Contract.
Contract with a board auditor the way we do with the board attorney. And then there's no benefits, there's no social security, workers' comp, any of it. It's just whatever we say, and then they worry about their own taxes.
And so I would say at that point, board, um, and, and I'm not sermonizing, please forgive me, I just, at that point, we need to be able to come with specific reasons why we would need an auditor, why we wouldn't need an auditor, and, and to justify our position on that, because that's, that's the, that's the, and if we need an auditor, what's the scope of that? 'Cause I think, again, part of my thing is, I think the scope of this thing has just been way, um, way misunderstood, so that's my, my two cents.
Okay, I think we can move on from this subject. I think, well done, board, I have to say. I love five zero votes, believe it or not. I like the five zero votes, after long discussion. Okay, board auditor report, Susan, I don't think you wanna do this again, do you? Will, board, please contact Susan with any questions. Board members, we're gonna show, okay. Um, board auditor report, we're skipping reports by board member, do you mind going first, Ms. Wright?
Yeah, I'll go first. Uh, uh, went to E.H. Miller graduation, um, this morning, um, and I gotta tell you, um, again, we say it every year, if you've never gone, you need to go. Uh, as a matter of fact, Ms. Langston spoke, and Ms. Langston mentioned something I thought was very interesting. Uh, she said, um, offered the idea that someone had mentioned, that every administrator before, at some point in their career, needs to serve at E.H. Miller for a year as an administrator. And, and I will tell you, I think that is an excellent idea. I don't know if you could, I mean, that would be a, I, I'm sure an administrative nightmare to make that happen, but, but I will tell you, it creates, it creates a perspective, uh, and, and that perspective builds a lot of thankfulness, a lot of gratitude, a lot of humility. Um, it's just a wonderful, wonderful place. I can't, uh, say enough good things about Mary Piazza and the job she's doing out there and her team. Uh, just a great time, I, I cried, I don't mind admitting it, but I'm sitting next to Jane and she cried more, so, so, so anyway, it was just so wonderful, uh, to be a part of. Next, um, congratulations early to all the graduating seniors. Uh, I hope, uh, I know most of us plan on hitting all the, uh, all the graduation ceremonies, exciting time. Again, we're, we're producing some great kids, some great students who are gonna do some great things. People wanna hammer our educational system, I tell you, it's simply not valid, um, because our kids graduate and they go on to do what their ability and desire will allow them to do. And, and so it's wonderful to see that, um, um, every, um, every year. And, uh, and then finally, uh, just a big thank you to all the teachers and the administrators, to the superintendent. You guys work hard all year, you work even this, that hard in the summer. You don't really get a break, I don't guess, do you, superintendent?
No.
No. And, um, wanna thank you for that because it shows. It shows, um, uh, with our students, it shows with our teachers, and, uh, and I know this will be a summer of a lot of moving, so, uh, our thoughts and prayers will be with the HR department, uh, that will be handling a lot of shifting and moving, that happens every year, and, um, so all good. I would just encourage all the seniors to be careful as they move on.
Mr. Buckles?
I guess Mr. Wright's about said it all, except the one thing that always troubles me and always have at this time of year, and that's, uh, high school graduation ceremonies when our seniors and other students are on the road and driving, even if it's a week or two after graduation, they've got their mind on other things, and I don't think I've ever seen a year yet that we haven't lost a graduate. ever seen a year yet that we haven't lost a graduate. And I would, I would urge everyone to pray for our young people that are gonna be on the road, and they're gonna be kinda semi-conscious and really not fully realizing that they're out of school for good, from the public school system, so, I'll pass it on from there.
I'd also like to congratulate all the graduates again, it's a great accomplishment, like, parents that sit there late at night making sure the students are doing what they are supposed to, that's, you should be commended, 'cause that's a huge success, especially with the new state requirements and all the things that go along with graduation. Um, I'm excited, we had, all the elementary schools had sent home, um, the snack pack programs, we had everybody get peanut butter and jelly, which is a big expense, we had the huge community outreach for that, thank you so much for everybody who was included in that. And we've opened up to have two food giveaways this summer, um, along with the free lunches we give everybody every day on the school buses. Please, 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 parents, go find those places, send your kids. If you don't send them, we don't get funding, we need you to, you know, nourish those kids, even if you think, oh, well, there's somebody else that can use it more, no, that's not the right attitude. You, you do what you can to take care of your children and find that school bus, when you see a school bus in the summer, it's usually full of lunches, so please go find that and, um, utilize that wonderful thing that our food service director has spent endless hours to organize. But June eleventh, at Jenkins Middle School, we do have an actual food giveaway where we have, um, the, the food, ne, feed the, America, Feeding America's Coming, and we're gonna have, um, great time with that, giving away groceries, and if anyone would like to volunteer for that, please contact me, I'll be helping them with that. And then June twenty-fifth is Inter, um, Crescent City High School, or Miller Intermediate, wherever we decide, but that's gonna be great, people are getting, um, nourishment food, which is just a wonderful thing, to see a community come together and support those, um, people in need, so, thanks for all those people involved with that program.
Jane, don't, don't forget to, to congratulate the Lady Gator softball team.
I watched it, believe it or not, I watched it.
I was just gonna say, Nikki, a lot of people-
They were amazing.
A lot of people don't realize that you really championed that backpack program a number of years ago, and it has grown.
Yes.
It's gotten cra, yeah, but it's not, it's not me, it's just spreads like wildfire, because people care so much in this community, we're small, and I hear, oh, we're all poor, people don't care, but they do, they do. In fact, your church and Ed Kilabrew and the potatoes and this and that, the farmers work together, it's unbelievable, the networking is incredible.
Yeah, that's right, Ed, Ed went to the farmers and just said, hey, we, we need, we need this.
Tons and tons of potatoes, interlocking.
Have you ever seen Fourth Friday and, and in our-
I've heard about that.
You gotta get there, it's incredible.
Yeah, it's, it is incredible, so.
United Way says it's the poor helping the poorer, that's what this community is, and I've never seen anything like it.
Nikki's mother couldn't cook, and she used to make her peanut butter and jelly sandwiches every day when she was in elementary school, so, you're probably the same way.
So, yeah, I, I appreciate all the people that help with that, thank you.
Okay, Jane.
Well, this has been a very, very busy time with all of the awards nights and banquets and graduations that, that we've been to, um. I was with Terry and Phyllis this morning at E.H. Miller's graduation, and it was a very emotional experience, um, it always is. Uh, Mary Piazza and her staff do such a wonderful job there. Um, but I do realize I have a problem, because Phyllis and I were at the, uh, FFA banquet this weekend, and I cried through that entire banquet. Now, when you cry at an FFA banquet, you know, there's probably something wrong with you. But that was the most amazing banquet, and we are so fortunate to have such wonderful students in Putnam County. And after going to the award ceremonies, good grief, we've got some smart kids in Putnam County, they just-
I sit up there and feel dumb every year.
Oh, my goodness, they're just amazing, and the, and the scholarship offers that they've gotten, and the colleges that they've been accepted into, it's, it's, they're just so smart. Um, you know, I'm with David, it seems like every year for so many years, we've had, you know, some kind of bad thing happen with our high school seniors, um, many of them go to the beach and stay at the beach, and, you know, there's been tragedies involved with that. I just hope they'll all stay safe, um, make the right decisions, that, they need to be in our prayers. Um, I also want to remember the parents, because, again, uh, I remember how affected I was, um, that summer before my children left for college. I mean, it, it wa, it was something, and, um, so, I'm thinking of the parents at this time, too, and how, how emotional that's going to be, uh, during their last summer at home, some of them. And I want to thank all of our administrators, um, and staff for everything, teachers and staff for everything they've done this year. This is just, um, you amaze me. Every day that you step into your schools, you amaze me, um, with the wonderful things that you do. Um, I also know that this is a crazy week in our schools, at least it used to be at Palatka High School, so, I, I know it is all over the county, and I, I just can't thank you enough for everything that you've done.
Thank you. I really don't have a report, but something occurred to me while you guys were saying, we have a new Rotary Club out in Interlocken, and our very first year, we were able to give , uh, two thousand dollars in scholarships to IHS. Great, I thought that was wonderful. And that concludes my report. Mr. Moore, can-
Uh, yes, ma'am, I, I was asked to give the board an update about the sale of the Campbell Building. Uh, because of the administrative rules, there are a lot of hoops that must be jumped through first before we can put a sign out front saying, "For Sale." Uh, we have been, uh, the last few months in the process of, uh, crossing the Ts and dotting the Is. Uh, we just received the, uh, second and final appraisal. Uh, there is a pretty big difference in price between the, uh, first appraisal and the second appraisal, uh, and that really, uh, comes into whether the, the board, um, when receiving bids or receiving offers, uh, want to, whether the board wants to entertain any, uh, sale or not. You can decide to, uh, leave it there, you can decide to sell it, but that's kind of a premature, um, discussion now, because the property has not even gone up, uh, for sale yet. Uh, the, the rules are a little flexible, in that the board can decide to, um, let the, the market establish the price, uh, you can, uh, have, uh, a real estate agent, you can have sealed bids if you want to, uh, and then after you receive offers or receive bids and you don't like what you see, you don't have to sell. Uh, if you do decide to sell, there are certain, uh, parameters statutorily, uh, within percentages that, uh, the final number must fall within based on, uh, the relation to the appraisals, and I can certainly help you as we get to that point. Uh, but we are in that process now of, um, getting the, the newspaper, uh, advertisements out there, which is required, so, uh, everybody will know, uh, the, the public will know that it is for sale, and if they, uh, so choose, they can participate in the, uh, negotiation process, and whoever would like to have the building, uh, can certainly, um, let their intentions be known.
Can you send us those appraisals, Charlie? Or, I haven't, I haven't-
Yeah, I, I saw the first one.
I know about what the first one was, I remember, but-
Yeah, the, the second one just came in, and, um, the, the appraisal, uh, invoice, I have, um, today to, to give to Rhonda.
Also, um, it was my understanding, and I could be confused from the superintendent, I thought we have to sell that building, 'cause it's excess administrative square foot.
Scott, you can speak to that, but we are required by the Department of Education to sell it, because it puts us over our ancillary property limit, and so we will have to sell it.
Depending on the value that we're offered, if we had a community agency that wanted it, we could in turn donate it as well, so that, I think the board has several options on that, I don't know.
There are several options, and it has to be-
I'm just in favor of money.
There are, there are options, as long as it's in the public interest, there are some parameters, like I said, uh, percentage range that it must be within, and money received from the sale of the building must be used in a certain way, um, so that we can, we can cross and get there.
Sounds good. You finished? Thank you.
Could I, could I ask you, our understanding for years has been that it is an historic building, and has been registered with the state of Florida as an historic building, which actually would limit someone who purchased it on things they could do with it. And so if you could research that for us to verify that, because certainly, um, when it is sold, we would need to make that known, probably before it's sold, we'd need to make that known to someone. I was also told that the, the name of the building, the Campbell Building, uh, was named after John Campbell, as is the highway, um, and that that name has to stay with that building, because it was registered with that in Tallahassee. And so I guess I would really like some actual proof of that, I've been told that for years, I, I've never seen anything in, in writing.
And that is something that we've, uh, considered, too, and when we enter into any type of, uh, negotiation or a contract with a potential purchaser, that we put in language that would protect the district, that we're selling this, um, and if there are any, uh, federal, state, local regulations as it pertains to historical registries, uh, the purchaser would need to, um, find out what those are on their own accord, operate within those, uh, uh, laws and regulations, uh, so that it takes the, the burden off of the, uh, school district to try to guide them and, and offer advice on, on how it should be, um, handled after the sale. But the, you know, historical buildings can be sold, it's just how they are handled after the sale, that's really, you know, for the purchaser. But we want the, we want the purchaser to be on notice, obviously, and we want the, the contract to have clauses in there that will protect the district, that, um, be, be on notice, that it could have some type of historical significance, if it does, that's on you purchaser to determine how to go about dealing with it.
Okay, can I also ask, um, Scott is here, we, we are trying to move forward with what we're doing at Middleton Bernie Elementary, with getting, uh, the building of the classrooms, um, uh, on that property, but there were two pieces of property adjacent to, uh, our current property, one I think has been purchased, and you all had worked on that for us, there's a, another piece there that seems to be, it's very small, but it's ke, key to what we need to do with the driveway for, uh, Middleton Bernie, and I'm just wondering, since there's no way, I guess, to determine for sure who owns the property or how to proceed, how, you know, can we go the eminent domain route? What are we, what is our next step? 'Cause it's going to keep us from starting construction until we have that piece also.
Absolutely, I mean, we, we don't want any delays, if we have to, well, we'll certainly resort to that. Um, but there may be less restrictive ways to, um, obtain control over that property that will allow the, uh, quick construction that would benefit the district.
Okay, I'll leave that in your capable hands, and you can tell us when it's all taken care of, so we can proceed with construction.
We've, we've had to do that before, so that would be-
I just wanted our attorney to know he could exhaust whatever, whatever he needed to do to, to obtain that property for us, um, since the state was so kind as to get us our money so that we could move forward. Um, I'd tell you what, this is, the, April and May, and certainly the first week of June are, are the, the most exciting time of the year, because we find out what wonderful students we really have. We spend a lot of time, uh, going to programs and award ceremonies, and, uh, certainly the culmination of those would be our eighth grade honors and our top fifty seniors that we've had, um, just phenomenal accomplishments by students in Putnam County. And if you've never attended one, you really need to, so that, um, you can hear what our students do accomplish. And the fact that, over the years, that top fifty, we've done that, uh, for so many years that we have over fifteen hundred, uh, top fifty seniors who have gone on to be successful. And most of them unfortunately don't come back to Putnam County, because we don't have the jobs here that they pursue, but we have many, many students who are successful. Um, if you want a great education in Putnam County, you can get one, but it does take a little effort, you can't sit there and receive it through my osmosis, you have to work for it. And we have a lot of students that do, and we get to honor them at this time. Um, certainly, I, I went to Interlocken High Schools and Palatka High Schools, baccalaureate programs, and they were wonderful, um, they just, Kathy was at Interlocken High, um, Jane was at Palatka Highs, and, and again, our students and the, the things that they have to say, the music that they shared with us at one of them, uh, you just have to be amazed at our students, but you have to get out and see the positive. If you sit around and read the paper and watch the news, you're only gonna hear the negative, because apparently that's what sells in the news, but that's less than ten percent of our total population, and there are truly wonderful things happening. Uh, Miller Intermediate had a, another play that was amazing, um, Mr. Hughes, uh, is retiring this year, and, and they're gonna miss him greatly, because he's done some phenomenal things with the students at Miller Intermediate. Um, we also had Terry Haddaway from Georgia Pacific, uh, come with one of the engineers, Catherine Perez, and made a visit yesterday to Palatka High School. I invited him to come out and look at our engineering class and to see, uh, their final projects, which they, uh, presented, uh, they had presented them last Thursday night for the public, but they presented them in class yesterday, uh, for Mr. Haddaway and for the engineer, and they were absolutely blown away. They had no idea that we had a program such as that. And he couldn't say enough good things about it, and took out Georgia Pacific's credit card, wanted to give us some money, only we have no way of doing that. I said, please give us a check.
Find a way.
So, um, he said more and more-
Get a square.
Companies are, are going to, uh, using credit cards when they make donations, so I told him I would get Rhonda to look at it, um, but he's gonna continue to work with us. He was very impressed with the students and their projects, and these were projects that they came up with a problem, and they followed, uh, the engineering process to solve the problem, and they had actually come up and created things that they could actually sell. Anyway, I won't go into it, it'd take too long, it was truly amazing. Um, we, um, then took a tour with Ms. Hedstrom through, um, some of the other, uh, career activities that are available there at the high school, and again, Mr. Haddaway was just ama, he said, I had no idea you had this, and I said, I keep telling everybody what we have, but you gotta come out and see it for yourself. So anytime you're interested in something that's going on at our schools, or you want to see what the students are doing, please, um, we are a public education system, and it is paid for through taxpayer dollars, so please come to our schools or call the principal and ask for a tour, or meet with the principal to talk about what is available to students, I think you'll be truly amazed. Uh, tonight, we have Interlocken High School, and that'll be exciting, and pray that we don't have any rain, though, it, it is much more meaningful to them in that stadium, so that's what we're hoping to do. Uh, they have a contingency plan if not, and I guess we're not gonna talk about it